To order and it's April 15, 2019. And we're doing something a little different and we'll see how this works out, but we're excited about it, being able to hear from our community. And so what we'd like to do is start out with just a budget overview of where we're at, the process, that sort of thing. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. We prepared a few slides that were presented already, so this isn't new to the board, but just wanted to ground us back into where we are today. And Jim Anderson and Andy Radliff are going to assist me. We have our CFO and our Director of Budget. So here we are, and we start with a budget development timeline. And I'd like to go to the right side, and we'll read backwards, going the opposite way. We're in close to May. We're in April. Our next board meeting is in May. And there's some major cutoff dates, and that's in regard to statutory requirements and notification in regard to the budget and hiring and keeping staff. So those are hard stops for us within the budget. But as you know, June 30 is the end of the fiscal year, but there are more times than not in my last five years as a superintendent that we have extended past June or gone to the end of June before we really had a number from the state. So what's happening now is, you know, over the last five years, the spending isn't as free as it was, the money from the state level. I think Alaska was cash flow-rich prior to that time, so they were able to decide the budget before. Generally, it was about April or May during their 90-day session. However, we have been accustomed to having to adjust the board's adopted budget. And the Anchorage this month will decide on their taxes, which is a very, the green cards, they call them, about the taxes that they will do for property taxes. And the mill rate is already set for the operations. However, still in flux are the property taxes, not for present bonds, not for the bond just passed. That's eyes wide open. We know about that. This is really for debt that is 15 years old. At the time that those bonds passed, it was looked at as a contract, understanding that, you know, that's the cost and the state share versus local share. But there's, at this point in time, in the governor's budget anyway, that past debt reimbursement has been canceled. And so just recently, as of Thursday, the House did put it in at 50% rebate. So right now, we're sitting at $20.5 million. But that's, the Assembly is grappling with that right now, and it still has an opportunity to change because of the Senate. But if you go back, the budget really begins quite a bit over several months, about six different months there. And while we're starting school in August, really from September to March, we're operating and looking towards the next year in development of needs. Again, the count is in October that establishes the student count, and it'll be adjusted. We'll go into that. We provide the board with a pro forma budget, given that if all things stayed the same, what would it look like with our increased costs moving into one new year? But your approval of the budget took place in February, which was a very critical month because that was the same time in between your two budget meetings, board meetings in February, the governor dropped his proposal on February 13th in regard to what he believed the state should fund public education. And that's the administrative process. Now we're in the legislative process. So I wanted to kind of go backwards because we're already in April, and we can see all the budget development pieces that have taken place. And this is the same year after year. ASD, out of all 53 school districts, is the first out of the chute. Our local ordinance asks for the first Monday in May to have our budget moved over to the Assembly, whereas in the boroughs and other areas, it's April 1st. So we became a focus before many. But as you can see, each month, there's something special to do, and we're in the process of the legislative budget development, which is down at the bottom. And there's in yellow where it says extended sessions. There may or may not be. But we've moved through the board adoption in February. We've moved through the Assembly adoption in March, and we are now awaiting the state. And Jim will share a little bit about why that state number is so important to us. Our assumptions for which the school board built its budget was the present law, the current law at the time, it's still current law presently, right now, that we understood that House Bill 287, as well as the number for the BSA, were still intact, which is $5,930, and that we are experiencing declining enrollment. So we budgeted that in as a decline. Our expenditures are based on inflationary cost drivers. We understand that salaries and benefits, including medical insurance, as well as retirement, increase over time. Our utility costs do increase. However, when we have wonderful years like this year, we actually create some savings. And we certainly did that this year with less snow removal, as well as less costly heating in our buildings. That was a nice surprise. We have contracted services as well as lease and rents, if any of our schools are in rental spaces, such as a space like the one we're in today. If those increase, then our budget would need to adjust. I'm going to finish my part of this section, just explaining again the State Foundation formula in simplistic terms. Jim put it with pictures to help us understand. It actually is six steps. So what we start out as an attendance or average daily attendance, it's actually enrollment that we count of students. We take the mean or the average of the 20 days in February and, or October, rather, and come up with a number, and that is the number of students enrolled in our district, and we move it through this formula. So the formula speaks to school size adjustment. And larger schools, there's less dollars per child, and smaller schools, there's more. We experience both of those features in ASD. The prime size is really about 400 to 450 in elementary, no more than 1,100 for maximum payment, if you will, or gain from the state. And then those, and middle school's about 750. But there's certain sizes that provide the most money, but we also look at economy of scale. We're able to offer more to our students when they're together in a school, so we also look at that. But that's called the school size factor. And if you notice, our district number of enrolled students moved from 45, 336 to 49 by this step in the process. We move it to step two, which is the district cost factor. We don't receive any adjustments here. And Member Donley has shared at the state level, as well as in our local city, the dismay for this in regard to understanding the cost of living in Alaska. Anchorage, while we are the one, so we multiply it by one, and we're going to stay with the same number. Every other place in Alaska has a multiplier. Step three, special needs factor. There is a 20% increase. So the number, the ADM or the average, the adjusted ADM is multiplied by 1.2 to get a 20% increase to take care of vocational, gifted ed, special education, bilingual education. So they are not block granted. They are for specific, bilingual gets this much for a year, number of kids, special education. Literally, we, there's just a 20% increase in the entire group to service all of those needs. Then there's a CTE factor of just 1.5, which was put in probably about four or five years ago to articulate the importance of CTE. And with the special needs adjustment and the CTE factor, ASD spends more than that on career technical because we really believe in what that can do for kids. And then there's an intensive need factor for every one student that is intensive needs. You can multiply that by 13 on the, to adjust the ADM, which if it started at 5930 and you multiplied it by 13, that's what you would get. But it's step number five in the system. With intensive needs factors, those are for special education students that qualify under six different categories. So they're very specific, and they are audited. And then finally, step number six, which is the correspondence factor. For every 10 students, we really only receive, and this comes at the very end, funding for nine. And this is also something of concern for us because we have three correspondence schools in our district. So having, with place-based, so students actually go to a place. And the idea is if you have correspondence, you're not going to a certain building. However, all three of ours actually have space for children and families to go to. So that's a concern also. But this is the funding formula for the entire state, not just ASD, and our numbers are put through the system. And then Jim can run through the numbers, and then we'll turn it back to you, Madam President.
Okay. The next slide, I think you've seen it about five times this year, is the general fund revenue. If you look across the top, we show the adopted budget from the current year that we're in. The next line is what we have budgeted for next year in accordance with everything Dr. Bishop had talked about earlier on assumptions, and of course, the budget that was approved by both the board and the Assembly. And then you can see a comparison. So if you start at the top and you look at local revenue, you can see that it's, the property taxes are a little bit higher this year. But really, we, you'll see some areas where we either found additional revenue or we changed our projections based off things that are just happening in the economy. So the first is that we used a little over $4 million or quite, just under $5 million for fund balance for next year. And that was so we could keep, the main focus was keeping PTR the same without reducing it at any of the K-12 levels. The E-rate, our investments have done, I'm sorry, the E-rate is the automation and wireless in the schools. We anticipate getting a little bit more for that. The interest earnings, again, another half a million dollars. Our investments have done quite well this year. The user fees, you can see an increase there of about half a million. That's the King Tech partnership with Lower Yukon School District, which quite honestly is really getting a lot of attention, not just in our borders, but with our legislators at DC. And I got to go around. I know Member Vicalis went around as well and talked to legislators and staffers, and that really was the hot talking point as to what they could do to either increase that program or support it. So I think that was a big win all around. Then you look at the state revenue. When you look at the operating grants outside the BSA, the 8.4 million is, of course, the House Bill 287 that was approved last year for forward funding for FY '20. And that's been debated multiple times. The legislature clearly has sought a legal opinion on that and saying that if they don't open up education funding, then that remains solid and unchangeable. The governor, I think everyone saw the article last week, his AG came with a different legal opinion. So I think at this point, we'll just see how that plays out. I don't, I don't, wouldn't want to predict how many times we'll hear that discussion over the next couple of months, but it'll be lively, I'm sure. So here's where we get to the real crux of funding. Dr. Bishop talked about the governor's proposed budget. We put out many documents over the last month and a half, two months, and really, our, we are fortunate. We're one of very few districts in the state that has 100% or very near 100% of the maximum cap of local funding. As a result, if state funding goes down, local funding must go down if we stay with the current formula and if the local governments are held to the max local cap. Member Dyson from the Assembly is working with the rest of the Assembly to request that the governor either eliminate or increase the local tax cap. And because really, our, I think the Assembly has made it pretty clear, they want to make sure education in Anchorage is funded as well as they can possibly fund it. The challenge is federal impact aid. So the state gets about $92 million a year from the federal government that it spreads out to districts that either have a military base or tribal lands. So some districts, really a huge amount of money from federal impact aid, percentage-wise of their budget, would go toward them because they're on tribal lands. And then, for the most part, it's Fairbanks and Anchorage that pick up the military piece. So Alaska is one of two states in the nation that has signed up that says, we want to, we will do a disparity test, and it will show that a district on the North Slope comparatively with the state formula, assuming it's accurate, gets roughly the equal amount as Anchorage or Kenai or Fairbanks. And it doesn't mean equal in terms of dollars. If you look at what the state gives ASD, we get, it's just over $6,000 or just under $7,000 per student. There are districts who get $50,000 plus per student. Some of the districts are 300 students or below. We've got some really small districts spread around. So it isn't a dollar amount, an equal dollar amount. It's the fact that the formula is followed, and everyone gets comparatively the same amount. So they can have a 25% difference as they're looking at districts to be able to pass this disparity test. They range, it looks like over the last six years, somewhere between 17.5% to 22.5%. And you take out the high and the low, Annie could talk much more detailed about that. They take out the high and the low, and then they're really looking for, is it roughly equal? If you fail the disparity test, then by the way the money comes from the federal government, they would have to give us all of our federal impact aid, which is about 17 to 18 million dollars. But because they pass the disparity test, they can take 50% of our federal impact aid and keep it at state level and subtract that from the money that they were going to give us. Now, there's some districts where they're subtracting upwards of, I don't know.
$22 million.
$22 million from some of the districts, which is about 90% of their total state revenue. So when the Assembly asks to lift this upper limit, what they're really asking is the state has this basket, and it has a certain dollar amount in it. And if they fail the disparity test and they still follow their formula, we would get all of the state funding we currently get, plus we would get all of the federal impact aid that the state has been able to hold back, and so would all the other districts that get it. So what would happen is their basket of money is now about $92 million short to be able to meet their goals. So it's an uphill fight when you're talking about lifting local cap. So it will be, certainly be interesting as it plays along. And then you can see at the bottom, we've talked over and over, really, federal revenue for us is about 3% of the operational fund. That doesn't include title and student nutrition and all the other grants. Barring any questions? Okay. Okay. You can see our staffing level reductions for the last eight years. By and large, support services, instruction, district admin, support services, operation, maintenance did take the biggest cuts. We've talked that before. Next slide. These are the cost comparisons of the programs in the district. You could pretty much look at if we were to cut the original governor's proposed budget of $105 million, with the exception of special ed and elementary teachers, there aren't very many functions where you could have come up to $105 million. And really, by the time you leave the schools and you're down to really school security and below, there really was no realistic way we could look at cutting it and doing it within administration, which was one of the major talking points going around, is that the administration's bloated. That's where the cuts need to be made, but realistically, you couldn't get there with what was briefed. Next slide. These were the ASD funding reduction potential impacts. And really, we just showed the PTR comparisons on the bottom. At a 1% cut, 5% in the governor's proposed budget. I think everything all of us have heard publicly from even the Senate, by and large, at least the leadership on the Finance Committee, is that that particular budget proposal was, was, I think dead in the water was a phrase used to describe a couple of different portions of that budget. But this is what it really would have meant. It would have meant that at 12th grade, you're looking at a PTR of 40 versus 30, and of course, kindergarten would have increased PTR by 10. So.
It should be noted, too, this is assuming across-the-board cuts and not just directed towards teachers. This would be cutting everyone in from administration considering everyone at the equal amount to get to the, and then a class, this would be the class size for that.
So that's the opener slides.
Thank you very much. I think at this point, what we'd like to do is just give some directions here. And one of those are, we do have a sign-up sheet over at the entrance here for anyone that would like to ask questions live. We'll be replacing that sheet as we get names on there so that we have that continual flow. We do want to keep the questions directed to budget. If you have another question, be happy to email the school board, and we'll answer those questions, or Dr. Bishop. As questions come in, I will ask board members if they'd like to address those questions. It's, if we need help, we have the administration here to help us with answering those questions, and they may help us clarify some points and make sure that we are giving the right information out to the public. I'm not sure, well, at this time, I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about, we've had a lot of questions about why our budget increased by 80-something million. And I wanted to address that a little bit. And part of that is, as a school board, and any school board member can jump in on this, but I wanted to explain that in the past, we've always used our budget as what we were given, and we never actually asked for what we thought we needed to provide an adequate education or small classrooms or that sort of thing. So for the first time, we did add in grant money, which would be one-time money, that would help us keep our classrooms small and provide pre-K. And so that is where that extra 80-plus million dollars came from. And I wanted to be clear that it's not actually in the budget. It would be asking for grants, and it was just a statement saying from the board that if we were to do what we need to do to keep our classrooms small, this is probably the dollar amount that we would need. Are there any other board members that would like to comment on that?
Yeah, I'll jump in. So I guess I appreciate you bringing that up. And just to give a little background, the budget that we're hiring to is HB 287, but then we did put into our request an extra outside of that budget, 80 million. And it isn't necessarily, it's really, it's not what we think we need to keep class sizes small, it's what we think we need to get student outcomes. And empiric, you know, the research shows that high-quality instruction is, and Dr. Bishop can speak to this a lot more comprehensively than I can, but the things that really make a difference for student outcomes are, first and foremost, you know, a really good quality teacher. But class size does matter, and there are current studies that prove that and talk about if you do reduce class size to these appropriate levels, we will see better student outcomes. So that, and then we know the best investment we can do is pre-K. And obviously, the farther up the chain you go, the bigger bang we get for our buck, all the way to prenatal care and avoiding things like fetal alcohol spectrum disorder and, you know, those types of fetal things. And then, you know, every dollar we spend in pre-K gives us a huge investment. So if we can arrange for kids to get to kindergarten ready, you know, based on the measures that we have, ready, you know, kind of ready to deal with that school environment, we are going to be a lot more effective with our resources. So I just wanted to expand on that.
And I do want to clarify that we didn't just come up with that number. We did have a study done, it's called the Pycosodum Study, and that was done, I believe, 2016, 15, right? But they finished it up. And basically, it was information to us on what adequate funding would look like as far as the resources we needed. Correct? Okay. So I wanted to be clear on that, that it's not just the number we came up with and that it was something, as a school board, we felt necessary to communicate. Any other things the board would like to say before we look for any questions? Okay. Do we have any questions online? No? And so we do have, Shelley? Did you have a question? Okay. Would you like to come up front, please?
Can I ask more than one, since no one else?
Yes, you can. If we have questions starting to flow in.
Okay. Then interrupt me, fine. Okay. This is on, here we go. I'm Shelley Vendetti-Buchvich, and I have had several children go through the Anchorage School District. And my last one, Claire, is one of those intensive needs funding students. And I have been really involved in advocating for her education since she was three years old. So I do have a lot of questions because I, I like to think I'm somewhat intelligent, but none of the budget numbers ever add up for me, ever. And I, it just really, really doesn't make sense. And I've asked several times, is, you know, is there a person we could talk to? Could we have a workshop? Could we have something that maybe, in layman terms, you know, what does that look like? But I've never gotten anything. So I'm still kind of in the dark there. But what I specifically wanted to get to was our application for IDEA Part B. And I have, it really does tie into ASD's budget. So when I was going through that, because it's still, today is the end of the public comment period, and it says that nearly $1.3 billion in fiscal year 18 went for special education in Alaska. No, it's 1.191. And this was submitted to the feds. The state, I'm just, I guess I'm not seeing those numbers correlate on what I see here. And I am curious, what, what is our sped budget total for ASD out of that $1.2 billion?
Madam President, I'm going to defer to both Jim Anderson and Cindy Anderson in regard to the 6B expenditures. And Cindy can probably share more so of what they're spent on, and Jim can share the overall special education budget as much as we can. Most special education students actually receive general ed as well as special ed functions in a school, and so a lot of those are blended. That's what makes it difficult, but certainly, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Well, and that is what I have heard several times, is it's too complicated to track, and it's too complicated to explain to me.
No, we can explain it. We're ready right now. Jim, if you'd like to go?
Yeah. This shows, it says it's being tracked.
So if you look at how much of our budget, one, I'm not sure statewide where all of the sped money goes, but when they look at special ed money, you know, if you look at, we have roughly 900 intensive needs. If you look at Fairbanks, which is about a fourth our size, they have just under 500. Matsui's got about 500. Kenai's got a little over 400, and they're considerably smaller than us. If you were to look at percentages of, within the Big Five, they certainly have more intensive needs for the size of the population of the total school district than we do. But I have not done an analysis to determine the percentages of different types of money for the for the IDEA that they receive versus us. I can tell you, though, to start, if you look at our budget, and we briefed earlier that, that we get a 20% increase during the foundation formula, and that covers hypothetically special ed, bilingual, CTE, and gifted. And then there's another .15 for CTE. On special ed instruction alone, it's 21.8% of our budget, and that's on the operational side. And then on top of that, you have another just under 4% for the support services students. So we're spending a significant amount of money, well more than what the state provides percentage-wise for special ed support. It's true that we have a lot of vacancies with positions that are tough to hire, so I suppose there, there could be an opportunity to spend more, but about 24% is, is what we're spending for special education. So when you look, when you add up special ed and, and the instruction piece, it's about $129 million out of a 560-some-odd-million, $570 million budget. So it's pretty significant.
Well, all right. So are you referring to the slide that shows it's gifted and, and CTE, that that's, you know, that's 20%?
If, and Andy has talked to the state, I've talked to the state, I think all of the business officers have. The state never intended 20% of that to be for special ed. They, in fact, there never was a specific amount for special ed. The 10% was supposed to cover all of them, the CTE, the bilingual, of which we have, I think the last count was somewhere over 6,000-plus students in the district are, are at some tier of AEL. It also covered gifted, which we, we have a gifted program, and special ed. So, you know, we spend, if you were to, if you were to just add, well, just special ed alone, we spend way more than the 20%. If you were to add CTE, gifted, AEL, it's considerably more.
What are some of the things for the 6B, Cindy?
So I, I do want to clarify that there is the general budget, and then there's our 6B grant that we receive, which is the federal dollars, and that runs about 13.5 million a year, give or take, depending on the number of students. And that specific grant is, is spent on about 170 staff for special education. It's spent on consultants and curriculum and training, and summer work groups and ESY, and, and during ESY, that's transportation and all of those services. So we try to make it as go as far as we possibly can. But whatever is the federal dollars spent fully on special ed across the United States, Anchorage School District receives about 13.5 million that's included, that's put into our special education budget. And we are only able to spend that fund, that budget on special education services.
Okay. Well, that's, this is, this is all the information I am, I'm always told. And so I, I have that part. I know that the feds don't kick in nearly what is necessary, or nearly what IDEA was all about. The concern that I have is the intensive needs funding averages about 78,000 a year per student. So I'm not talking the 20% or the 24%. I'm talking intensive needs funding. And if I look at, you know, one specific school, there are about 30 intensive needs kids there. And so if you think about that, that's nearly two and a half.
Shelley, pull that from the mic, you don't have to be close to these.
Okay. That's, that's two and a half million dollars in funding a year. That school alone has been short-staffed the entire year to the point they're out of compliance. Every single intensive need student there is not having their IEP goals met, every single one. And that's unacceptable. And that's the budget we're at right now. That's not next year, when it really goes nuts. And so if I'm being told by Don Enoch and Commissioner Johnson that they can specifically track 1.2 billion from the state, I feel pretty sure ASD is capable of saying, here's exactly what we spent on sped. Otherwise, where would they have gotten those figures? They'd have to be getting that figure from every district.
Actually, they do. They get the number that Anchorage spends from Anchorage.
Okay.
And we give it to them every year. But when the state says they can track it, they mean to the district, not to an individual student.
Oh, I'm not asking individual student. I mean, that's pretty difficult, but.
So those numbers, the 24 million and the 13 million, what specifically additional information would you like? Because those are what they're tracking.
I'd like to make sure that sped dollars are being spent on sped. So when Commissioner Johnson says there is 1.2 billion being spent in Alaska on sped, I'd like to see, how's that happening? And at least at ASD, what percentage of that 1.2 billion did we get? And where'd it go?
I think we can come up with a number of teachers, classroom PD, and things that Cindy said, and publish that. We, we could do that.
I think you have had an awful lot of special education parents asking for this information for a long time. And, and when I say it doesn't really, really add up, I am looking at U.S. Department of Education funding grants paid to Alaska in total for fiscal year 18, 295 million, which isn't a number I'm hearing anywhere, 295 million. And granted, it's, you know, it's all over the place, it's rural, it's, but there's a lot of stuff here that is here in, at ASD. So that's where we have problems, because it feels like we get part of the story, and, and then it looks like, wow, there's all this other money. Where's that?
Well, title programs, mostly.
One of the things I wanted to say is, I know that, one of the things we've talked about is, is an audit with sped, but we haven't gotten, what I wanted to get was specifics on what exactly, I know Jim had asked me, Dr., or Jim had asked me about, you know, we could do that, but we need to know what the specifics are and what are we looking at. And so maybe if we had more informa, I don't know, Jim, do you want to talk about that?
I, I certainly can talk to you also to the side. The entire state foundation formula for the, for all districts combined is about 1.2 billion. So I don't know where the disconnect could be as to whether that should have all been for special ed, or if there's some other numbers. So I think I would have just, I think there's, somewhere there's some numbers that have swapped columns. I'm positive if the state spends 1.2 billion for state, for all education, including sped, that, that somewhere there's a disconnect in the data you received, and maybe we can help you.
Well, this is the actual IDEA application that was filed with the feds, signed by Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, that's purely for the grant? Okay.
Well, but they're, they're stating they, they spent this in fiscal year 18, certifying that this is correct in order to qualify for funding for fiscal year 19. So I don't, it's, there's no separate numbers here, or line, or, you know, column switched. It's pretty blatant and.
So I, I'm going to say that probably we need to have a, I don't think this is the right, I hear your question, Shelley, but I, I think we need to sit down and have more information on this so that we can better understand the question. And, and I promise you that someone will get back to you, and we will work on those numbers with you to explain maybe where the disconnect is, or where the funds are going, or whatever. But it will be followed up on.
Well, and I hope you understand, I'm not trying to come down on anybody. I'm just saying, this is the information that's out there.
Right.
And so when parents see it, they're like, wait a minute, how is that making sense? Or I believe people at the state level see it and go, whoa, they don't need all that money to educate X amount of students. And then we end up in positions like we are, that maybe if we could put it out there so it makes a little more sense. And while I'm up here, I just have to say Medicaid reimbursement, 750,000, our special education kids are used as a revenue line item in this budget. If they're going to be used that way, that income should go right back to their benefit, not into the general fund. And that's just wrong. So, anyway, everything else, thank you, I appreciate it. And if, I, I have the entire packet for IDEA, if you would like it, and, you know, what they signed, so.
I, I know, believe me, I, a special needs parent, I, I hear you. And we will make, do the best we can in getting those questions answered.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I, I do appreciate a great deal, the fairness and open-mindedness. I've worked with many of you, and I do appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Aunt Cindy.
Thank you. So it looks like we have another question here. Sarah asked, what happens to the forward funding that the legislator passed if the governor decides to file a lawsuit on this? Would there be a halt in that funding?
Madam President, I believe that the issue is in regard to disbursement of that. And has, I don't believe the Department of Revenue has dispersed that money as of today. So it's, it, it hasn't been dispersed, and, but our, our cash flow is such that we have funds, whether they were previous funds or not, but if it's held up, it would simply be held up. But our district has not received House Bill 287, nor has any district received funds. And this was the first year of the support, let alone next year. So Jim, would you mind adding to that if there's any additional information? And it's not DED that disperses the money, it's the Department of Administration?
That's correct. There's, there's clearly a disconnect between, and we talked about it earlier, the legislative legal team has said that they must pay it. Must pay means by 30 June. The AG, a week ago, sent out a legal opinion saying that they didn't have to pay it, and that it could be line itemed. And I have not heard openly any discussion as to what are the next steps on legal actions regarding this. Several years ago, a governor cut something that later on ended up being reversed. It's, it's possible that a scenario like that could occur, but I, I think it's premature to talk about any pending legal actions that have not been announced.
So based on that information, I, I think a lot of questions, and I, and I'm just going to ask this one because I know it's been asked of me, is, we follow the budget that the governor has been, has approved, that is in law currently, right? So our budget will be based on that unless we have a reason to believe that it will be else, something else, right? So we're moving forward as, with HB 287.
I think people are concerned, though, and I guess we just don't really know the answer, that if it is litigated, you know, we know that the Attorney General said one thing, we know that there's a, an opinion in the Senate that, that they can't do that. And we, as a district, might get caught in between if they, if there is a lawsuit ongoing and they don't release the funding for a few months. Fortunately, we have some reserves, but at some point, even those run out, right, Jim?
At some point, reserves would run out. I think we could afford to cash flow this for the length of any legal review. There are districts in the state, though, that would more than struggle. So the impact on, on the districts that have fund balances and have been very disciplined in maintaining them, or have been able to, probably can, can absorb during the legal battle. But there are certainly those who will be challenged.
I think I would ask one more thing, and is that if someone could just talk about our, because there's been a lot of conversation on what budget we follow, and, which we've kind of cleared up now, I think. But again, there's been a lot of confusion on pink slips. And that's part of our budget, too, and, and how we apply that money and what we do. And so I thought if maybe we could clear that up a little bit, and just have a quick conversation on that.
I'll start, Madam President, and then ask Jim to clarify, or anyone else. So in reference to pink slips, I think what we're referencing is a colloquial term for reduction in force. And that has, two years ago, we actually had a proposal in the Senate to reduce education funding by 5%, and we had never seen that before, and we weren't sure the staffing level. So we actually had a layoff for about a month, and then rehired folks. And it was very disruptive to our system. At this point in time, we do not have any action or, or have come to the board to request any kind of reduction in force due to revenue. We have made reductions in staffing, I believe of about 25 people due to enrollment. Our enrollment parameters are such that our enrollment's going down. We are absorbing that through our attrition. We have about, in any given year, 250 to 300 certificated staff, whether they be principals, teachers, nurses, librarians, anyone in that certificated arena that resign, move, or retire. One of the things that the AEA president mentioned once when I was talking to him is also, we may see an upward tick because, I believe it was in 1992, they did a, a large major buyout of mainly Tier 1 people. And we're reaching the time of 25 to 28 years, when it is retirement time, '26? We're in, what's that? '96? Okay. So that we are coming up to a term when that buyout would become attractive to folks. So we have a lot of people who are electing to leave. And so the need to hire and have open positions, we feel we are there, even given a significant cut. Of course, that's not a 25% cut by the governor, but the House just proposed a budget that supported 287, that supported the present BSA. I would say as we look to the future after next year, that this is a sign of what may lie ahead. But the, the reason, if we think about on that timeline of the budget, that I believe we might be talking about pink slips, because there's really, I don't think we need to right now, but, is that May timeline for certificated staff to be notified. Tenured teachers by May, we do it by May 14th, because May 15th is the statutory cutoff, for anyone who's a tenured teacher to be notified of their contract for the next year. And then non-tenured would be, I believe, the 22nd or the last day of school. So we just have to keep those in mind to communicate to our employees. We're using data as it comes to us, information, and at this point in time, with the support of the House, I, I wouldn't believe that, that would be necessary. And Member Holloman mentioned, which was very critical, that when we make reductions, we would really make them on both sides of the House, if you will, certificated people as well as non-certificated people. It's just that the timelines for non-certificated people or other unions outside of AEA is a shorter period. So it's maybe a 30-day notice, or maybe a 90-day notice, or a two-week notice. So those reductions in staff, or a RIF, or a pink slip to other staff members, it wouldn't just be on, on the instructional side, it's just that the instructional side comes with a very tight statutory requirement, whereas the other requirements for notification are built into the collective bargaining agreements or the CBAs. So that might be why we're hearing about them, but at this point in time, we did not move forward with looking to reduce our staff other than what's called for by enrollment. So we elected to do that, our budget is built off of smaller staff. So we elected to do that, our budget is built off of smaller staff. However, with the, with the natural attrition that ASD experiences every year, I believe that we could work within, and those that want to work for us can continue to work for us, even given a budget reduction. So there is not a recommendation at this point in time, with the information out there, that we would move to a pink slip, RIF, or what that stands for is a reduction in force. Jim, Andy?
The only thing I would add to that, was if the cuts are deep enough, within the legislature, there are reduction in force statutes that allow you to cut outside, or reduce, reduce positions on the workforce outside of that statutory deadline of 15 May. So, and that's, it's about equal to 3% of your basic need. If that reduces, which is, your basic need is your adjusted ADM times your BSA. For Anchorage, it's about $13 million, a little less. So if it's, if cuts are above that, then we could enact the RIF statutes, and you could make reductions outside of the statutory window.
Well, thank you. I know there's always a lot of questions around that, and I think it's always good to have good clarification, and thank you, Dr. Bishop and Mr. Ratliff, I think that was well explained. Is there any other, I don't see any other questions. Do we have any signed up, Katie? If not, is there any questions at the?
I think we have something.
Oh, okay, sure. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you all very much. My name is Jessi Menkens, and I'm a mother, here with my two children, both privileged to have an education within our school district. One of the primary reasons that prompted me to come to this forum, and I commend you for hosting it, was to speak in relation to a decision that was made by this body at the beginning of this month, to not go ahead and sign a statement in opposition to the governor's very detrimental budget, and the ramifications that it would have on this district. And here, within this meeting, I'm hearing clear conversation about the concerns and the unknowns, and it's my hope that you would reconsider. And my question for you, given that, is what is it that you are doing actively in terms of engagement with the legislature? Explain, please, a little more behind the scenes, for parents to understand what that engagement looks like at a district level.
Well, I think, I want to say snelling, I have to say Jorvika, Vikalis. Would you like to talk about your visit down to Juno, and then we can maybe have some other board members share their visits?
Thank you for the question. So, yeah, I can speak for myself. I've been down to Juno, and I don't even remember, we met with legislators back-to-back-to-back-to-back, you know, constantly, you know, reiterating, you know, how we use our funding, the importance of, you know, fully funding, you know, everywhere. We had the opportunity, we brought down two students. And what I often hear from the legislators is that they hear the students more than they hear the adults. And it's, they have very powerful, you know, stories. I still continue to, you know, email legislators and talk to them whenever they're in town. Went down to Washington DC, and talked with legislators down there, as well. So there are a lot of different ways, as a board member, that, you know, we communicate with Juno, and we work with, you know, different, you know, different people around the community, you know, to keep education funding, you know, as a top of mind and a priority, you know, in everything that we do. It's not just, you know, one meeting, or what we do here. You know, we do a lot more than, you know, probably what other people, you know, see. And so I respect your question, and I thank you for it. I went down with Deena, I think a couple of other board members have also been down to Juno as well, and I'll let them talk to their experiences.
The other thing, I guess, because of the question you're asking, if there's any board members that would like to expand on, maybe why they felt that resolution didn't support their views on the budget, because as it pertains to the budget, that would be welcome, too.
I would welcome that feedback as well, so it would be both the level of engagement, just to have more understanding and clarity on that point, and would be very interested in understanding what, what would prompt individuals serving on the body that represents public education in this district to not strongly oppose these drastic cuts that are being proposed by the governor.
Ms. Hildy, you haven't changed your last name.
No. Well, thank you so much for being here. And one of the unfortunate things we failed to do, when we voted on that resolution, was to talk about why we voted, and we've been trying to improve that process on our board, but it didn't happen that night, so I apologize for that, because it is very frustrating to see people just vote with no explanation. When it comes to the budget, you know, I think it's a conversation, and anytime we're talking about $800 million and 47,000 kids, it's worthy of talking to people and engaging with them back and forth, like we're doing now, and when we're looking at where we're at in the legislative process, they're past the governor's budget for this year.
Oh, yes.
We're working on the legislative, and from an advocacy role, as you've heard these guys talking with legislators, you know, we make strategic choices on how can we best communicate the needs of our district, and the vision of where we're going, in a way that's respectful of a lot of different legislators, and what their personal representation, you know, how they value their representation, and what they think their mission is in representing their constituents. So not voting for something, there wasn't a, for me, a need for it, right? We're doing this intense advocacy work, where I didn't see a value gained to children versus a potential harm in breaking down communication that we need not just this year, but going forward. You know, I shared earlier, my objective is long-term planning and stability for our district, and those positive relationships with our legislators are critical to that, where they say, when they talk to the Anchorage School District, they know they're gonna be part of that discussion, and really get truthful, honest, transparent answers, not just, you know, one-page sheet about, you know, something that they're not really even on right now.
I'll hold for my response until I hear from additional members.
Mr. Holloman?
Yes, I'll say, I haven't gone to Juno, but I do try to be fairly active locally, mostly in terms of trying to make sure that parents understand the potential impact of what we're looking at, and get them to identify what education means to them, and have them speak to their various legislators. Because ultimately, I think that, that matters a whole lot more. I think it matters when a school board member says something, but probably not as much as 50 constituents, or 20 constituents, or how many ever can. We do get identified as being part of a particular group that has an agenda, and broader voters. And ultimately, to me, it's got to be the public demanding funding for the education they want for their kids, or we shouldn't fund it at that level. They really are the ultimate consumers of it. I regret not speaking to the motion. I assumed it would pass for no real good reason, I guess, in retrospect, in that, as a board member, I think I've got a responsibility, if there's a million dollars, or $50,000 in this district, that I don't think is being spent in a way that brings value to our community, we have a responsibility through the superintendent to redirect that spending, or to pull it back, or, or do something. And I don't think we do. Not to say that we spend every dollar perfectly. An organization this size always has mistakes, they have missteps, and I don't know of a way to get rid of that, either. But I look at the potential for the reduction that they're talking about, and I think it's pretty devastating. I was surprised by the outcome of the vote, as you were, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, I, I do, I connect with legislators all the time, they'll text me and ask me for things. And one of the things that several people did ask for was a statement from the school board stating their position. And so, as Chair of the Communications Committee, that's why I brought it forward in that committee, and then we brought it, what passed out of that committee, to the body. I also, as Andy said, I've been to PTA meetings, I've been to a lot of other various groups talking about, answering questions, talking about what's going on in the district, and I think it absolutely is more impactful if the public, and in particular, students tell their, tell their stories. But I've been encouraging coaches, and mentors, you know, people who do gifted mentorships, people who engage with our schools and our students in a lot of different ways to raise their voices and talk to legislators. And it was very gratifying, both times, but particularly this last time, that Star and I were down in Juno, to hear legislators say, I have heard from so many constituents, and they are saying, please, fund education. This is really, and not just people who have kids in the district, just community members as a whole. So it really makes a difference to them, when, when, you know, their constituents, and just Alaskans in general, speak out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would say also, as, as board members, you know, we attend community council meetings, we're out in the public, we're going to PTA meetings, you know, we are always advocating for education, and, and what that takes to provide a quality education to all of our students. I think for me, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, is, when I go to Juno, I try to speak to every senator or representative, regardless of what side of the ticket they're on, because when I think about school and students, I don't think about what side of the ticket they're on, I think about what's best for the child. And being able to have those conversations, and doing it in a advocacy, and professional, and respectful way, certainly, we will not always agree on how we think that budget should be spent, but I always think that, just as was said with Donna Arden, that when the question was asked, did you talk to the school districts when you proposed this budget? She said, no, that's not our job. Well, it's not my job to figure out how it gets done, but it's my job to advocate for our students here in Anchorage, so I will always ask for what I think is appropriate to educate our students. And I, I would, I'm speaking broadly, but I would say every member on this board thinks the same way in their own way. And, because I don't think anybody on this board would be here if they weren't a champion of children. So what their reasons are, and why they vote the way they vote, I can't explain that. I hope that there will be more conversations and more communications when we have things that are of this kind of importance. And I think that each board member will take that responsibility to heart, and that as a board, we will come together, and we will do more communication, and more discussion of those types of issues, so that whether we agree or not, at least we know where each person stands, and they can present their points.
One other thing that I wanted to just mention also, is that, you know, a nice thing about being in Juno, and having extended conversations, and being in the offices and talking with the aides, is you do hear a little bit more of the depth of what they're thinking. And I spent about a half hour in one of our representative's offices with their two, with his two aides, and they went through their numbers, and they were talking about how they triangulated between DED information, and ASD information, and federal information, and they came up with, they're absolutely positive that we have between 17 and 18 students in each of our classrooms. So coming back to Anchorage with that information, and being able to share it with the administration, you know, I mean, they told me who they're meeting with, who's sharing this information with them, and, so it's good to hear what they're hearing.
Yeah.
And it's good to be able to go back and refute it. You know, another thing that we hear is, we are spending more per pupil every year, and on a per pupil basis right now, that's true. When you have shrinking enrollment, and you have fixed costs, of course, cost per pupil will go up. But it's putting that into context that's important, so, that's another benefit of spending that time.
Thank you.
And just one more thing I'd like to say. Our staff, Dr. Bishop, our administration, spend a lot of time in Juno advocating for our schools, and they are looked at as the experts. And I'm so proud of them, and what they're able to accomplish when they go down there, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that, and for just sharing more about what is being done. It's helpful to hear about that level of engagement, and I think it's true that, from a public perspective, and as a parent, we maybe don't see or understand all of that. That said, what was seen clearly, was that failure to act earlier this month. And so that's what prompted these comments. And again, it would be my hope, is that this body will continue to have those conversations, and perhaps there would be a statement that could be released from the place of leadership that you're in, not only here at a district level, but statewide. And I was heartened to hear some of your financial analysts talking about concern for other districts. When we look at the base student allocation, and the foundation formula as a whole, there is so much at stake, and a lot of that can get lost, especially if we're only solely focused on where we are in this larger district, where we have the cash flow maybe here to sustain us through a legal battle, and other districts just frankly don't have that leeway. So thank you for what you do, thank you for your public service, and thank you for allowing for this type of dialogue to happen. My hope is that the next time, there's a little bit larger turnout and a crowd, and would encourage you to send notices out through the general email. I think families get those and receive those, and it would be good for that level of outreach in the future. Thank you.
Before you leave, could you spell your last name, please?
Menkens, M-E-N-K-E-N-S. First name is Jessie, J-E-S-S-I-E.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So instead of getting up and checking the sheet, is there anyone else that have any questions that they would like to ask at this time? We have about 15 minutes, and we, I mean, that's the reason we're here. It's your time. And if we don't have any questions, and no board members have anything to add, we may just do a early 15-minute recess, and then come back for celebrating staff and students. Board members, any? Okay, if you happen to come on late, and you'd like to ask a question, please go ahead and either send that in, and we will make sure that you get an answer to your question. Thank you. So, short recess until 5:30. But we are going to call the work session back to order, for the purpose of recognizing staff and students.
And you wore your diamond colors, all right. Yep, yep, these two right here, thanks. We have a few. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, as our awardees are filing in the door. I just wanted to share, my name is Deena Bishop, and I'm the Superintendent of ASD, and I'm joined here by Star Marsette, the Board President, as well as the other board members, to the section of our budget, or budget, we just talked about the budget, the section of our board meeting that is called Focus on Staff and Students. It happens every two weeks, and it was a deliberate effort by our board to really celebrate the people who make ASD great, and those people are our students, they are our staff, and they are our community. So without further ado, the first awardees I'd like to share this evening are the Youth Mental Health First Aid Instructors, and Wendy Shagelford with the UAA Alaska Training Initiative. Please come forward. All of you, please come forward. Diane Lemon, you're also with this group, please. All right. So we have, next to me, we are recognizing the YMHFA, the Youth Mental Health First Aid Instructors. Recognize the increased needs around mental health within our schools and community. This year, ASD Secondary Education Department increased its focus on mental health. Part of that focus includes... Part of that focus included youth mental health first aid training for adults. YMHFA is designed to teach adults methods of assisting a young person who may be in the early stages of developing a mental health problem or in a mental health crisis. ASD collaborates with UAA Training Initiative and the State of Alaska to provide this training. This was an intense week-long training that prepared the instructors, 10 of them, to deliver the YMHFA content in one-day training modules. These instructors went on to train nearly 500 ASD staff this school year. ASD Youth Mental Health First Aid instructors are not paid any additional salary for teaching this course, but do so because they are passionate about mental health and providing ASD staff additional resources to help students. The training for staff and administrators will continue through the next two years to ensure even more adults in the schools have the knowledge and confidence to speak with students with mental health needs. Please join me in thanking these individuals for their time, willingness, and invaluable talents to help this important work move forward. You all make ASD great. And I'm gonna turn it over to, okay, Diane Lemon, our partnership between the district and UAA. If you could say, introduce yourself, say your job, and a little bit perhaps about the partnership.
So, my name is Diane Lemon. I am the counseling coordinator here with the Anchorage School District and this has really been a passion of mine. I've worked very closely with many people here in our district, including Paula Patterson, who was the Assistant Director of Related Services, Maria Hernandez, which she has many roles, but this role specifically was Project Aware, which is a state grant that several districts have. And so we've incorporated the youth mental health training here within the district. And as was mentioned by our superintendent, we want to continue pushing this work forward. We know that we have a lot of students in our district that really struggle with mental health needs. And so the more adults we have that we can provide training for so that they have that foundational knowledge so they can have those helpful and kind and warm conversations with students who may be experiencing mental health needs.
Do you wanna speak as well or no?
My name is Wendy Shackelford and I'm actually a retired school resource officer. So my partnership with ASD has begun a long time ago. I'm really proud of our school district employees as well as our trainers who are providing valuable training to our staff so that they can assist our students, not just in their time of need, but in regular, everyday conversations before things get to the crisis. So, thank you Superintendent for acknowledging all of their hard work.
Thank you. And thank you to those that are the trainers, that do the work for ASD. Thank you. And can we get a picture with you? We get a picture, we're gonna just go right back there, is that alright? And now, with the Diamond Lady Links basketball team and coaches, please come forward right here. Alright, these ladies are a repeat, it's not a deja vu, they did it again this year. So, Diamond capped the high school basketball season by winning their second state title in a row. They have qualified for the 4A state title game the last five years, winning three out of the five state championships. In addition, they haven't missed the state tournament since '07, the longest streak of any 4A team in the state. The 2019 state championship team had only one returning starter from the 2018 team entering this year's basketball season. And we could guess who, where is she, all the way in the back? Yes, right there. She was on the team since her freshman year. I've been watching her a very long time. When Diamond played a very competitive Bartlett High School in the state championship game with Bartlett mounting a huge comeback at the end of the game. When the final buzzer prevailed, Diamond finished on top by winning the game 62 to 57. Diamond was led by Alaska's three-time Gatorade Player of the Year senior, Alyssa Peely, who finished with 40 points and 19 rebounds. She is headed to the University of Southern Cal in the fall. Woo-hoo, come on forward! And for those of you following the news, it is all pure talent. Alright, varsity co-coaches Jason Stahl and Jim Young have just completed their 18th season at Diamond High and congratulations on your state championship repeat. You make ASD great! And do you have one captain or two captains? Two? Two captains, where are the captains? Come forward. Alright, so ladies, we would, I'm gonna have everyone take the mic and say your grade and, you know, maybe what you liked best about your team or what you liked best about basketball or what you liked best about Diamond or what you liked best about anything. And then we'll share that, go around, and then we're gonna turn the mic over to the team captains to share a little bit of wisdom about this repeat state title. So we'll start with you. Name and grade and something.
I'm Faith Nellis, I'm a senior at Diamond and the best part about playing with my team is that we got along on and off the court, so we had team bonding both ways, so.
My name's Carly Borakovsky, I'm in 11th grade and my teammates were very confident in each other and always supported everyone.
My name is Kami Roth, I'm a sophomore this year and my favorite part about this team is like, they're all just like my older sisters, cause I'm like one of the youngest and they're all my like loving family, like on and off the court. And yeah, I love them.
My name's Kayla Peely, I'm a freshman and one thing I like about our team is how we get along.
Is that at home as well? Oh. Oops.
I'm Larissa Parker, I'm a senior at Diamond and I think my favorite thing about my team is that we can recover and come back and win a state title.
My name's Yavion Rab, I'm a senior and the best part about this team is how we stuck together through the adversity that we faced.
Great work.
My name is DeShawna Schuster, I am a senior and what I love about this team is that we're comfortable around each other and we're family.
My name is Chanel Martinez and I'm a senior and what I like best about my team is they're
My name is Angeline Nugget and I'm a junior and my favorite thing about this team is that we all like to win, so.
So, you guys as captains maybe can tell us a little bit about your experience or... Go ahead, you can go first.
I'm Melissa Peely and I'm a senior this year. And I can really say about this group that, you know, we worked so hard the whole entire year. We struggled a little bit in the beginning, you know, people doubting us and whatever, but you know, how everyone stuck together and got better and you know, it all paid off because we got a state title.
I'm Ariana Camacho Villa 14 and I'm a junior and one thing I liked about this team is we were very, very... We knew our end goal and we stuck to the plan and we got it.
Excellent job, Coach! Would you like to say something about your team?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Well, you know, I was just talking to my coaches a week ago, 18 years, oof, you look back and, you know, we've definitely coached a lot of young ladies in our program and we'll be back next year and next year we'll bring new challenges, but it's pretty exciting because, you know, every year, every group of young ladies brings something special. So, now this is a very special group of young ladies. In the beginning, it was very rough, you know, but they stuck together, they didn't let any negativity break them down and it says a lot about the character of this team. So, just really proud of them for doing such a great job and thank you again for having us here. I kept my promise to my wife back there, I wouldn't put her on the spot, but I just wanted to say hi to my wife. She doesn't come to, she doesn't come to any games, but that's okay, but she came to the most important thing here, so. I was gonna, you know, we've got one of the top psychologists in the Anchorage School District and he doesn't like to talk in front of people. I'm trying to figure this out, yeah. So this is Officer Mark Haywood, one of our assistant coaches. This is my co-coach, Jason Stahl, and he was our JV coach for many years. And thanks to Ms. Tina here from Diamond, she was able to let us work together the last two years as varsity co-coaches. This is Coach Paul Manlandingham, he was a former varsity coach at South, he was there the last four years and then he came over and he worked with our program. And my joke with Paul back in the day is, we used to play South and we'd beat him and then I'd shake Paul's hand and I'd say, "Hey, well, first of all, he's the, what are you, the city supervisor for street maintenance?" Well, one of, no, he goes to all the budget hearings, he's, don't let him, don't let him be so shy, he's a big with the city. So, we used to shake hands at the end of each games and I was like, "Hey, I know we beat you, you're gonna put a big snow berm in front of my driveway today after the game", so. And then this is Jill DeGuzman, who is a former player of ours, went to college and played and she came back and she's coaching our program. And then Asa Winchester, who is a teacher at Lake Otis and he's been with our program for a while, so just very fortunate. I know we get a lot of credit for what we do in our program, but really, I know being in a leadership role, you really surround yourself with good people and they really deserve the credit, so, alright.
Ladies, I do have to tell you, I'm just a big awesome fan and I did notice, one of the regrets, Alyssa did have a regret this year and I heard you on an interview on the news, her biggest regret was that they couldn't beat Wasilla one more time. And so, I didn't know if she knew, but my daughter graduated Wasilla, she was not a basketball player, she was a volleyball player, but I have watched you guys for a long time and all four years that you've played, you are just dynamic and outstanding and just a leader on your team, so, good job. You guys wanna go over here and get, ladies and gentlemen, your Diamond Lady Links and we'll get a picture, how's that? And Tina, you need to be in this picture, come on up! Come on down! Soon as everyone's assembled, is your coaches, are your coaches here? Coaches too? Come on! So these young men and women did an exceptional feat as well. I think they beat a Science Olympiad state team that had had their, they had won for like 15 some odd years in a row and they unseated the state Science Olympiad team from Tealent Middle School. So congratulations! And let me tell you about them. Northern Lights ABC performed exceptionally well during this year's state Science Olympiad, taking home the title and an invitation to the state or the Science Olympiad National Tournament at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. Two teams of 15 students each were led by science teacher Carol McKee, who has been teaching at Northern Lights for 13 years and coaching Science Olympiad for five of those years. During the state competition, third to 12th grade students come from all over the state to compete in various science trials. The Northern Lights ABC team took first at state in the events Anatomy and Physiology, Battery Buggy, Fossils, and Game On. For Anatomy and Physiology, students were asked to label diagrams, describe the functions of various organs, and answer numerous questions. Who are our doctors, future doctors in the group here that did that? Who competed in that one? Any of you guys? Other kids? Alright. Oh, part is, they're probably practicing those organs for the state or the national competition. Game On focused on inquiry and the nature of science. Students used computer programs to code and create an original game based on an assigned theme. They were judged on the aspect of working code, organized code, and all conditions of the game. So who was a coder? Who are our future coders here? Alright, congrats, give them a hand! And there's many, many activities. Any of you do the flight one with flying airplanes and, you did? Alright, with the rubber band and all that good stuff. Elastic launch glider? Alright, so those are, the competitions are pretty steep, the students receive some instructions and some materials and really just use their brains and working together to figure things out. And honestly, it is a major upset what this young group of students did in our state just recently. So I'm gonna do the same thing and we're gonna move you out from hiding behind this thing here. And if you guys could spread across, I'd like you to say your name and your grade and maybe the competitions, the ones that you were placed into. And this is run similar to a track meet where they compete individually or sometimes in a small group, similar like I could run the 100 mile or 100 meters, but also be in a relay. But the school that wins is like a track meet where it's an accumulation of points. And so, whether it's important to place, it's important to work with your team and to know where you are. So it's also strategic, it's a very exciting competition. So if you would start and say your name, your grade, your competition, and maybe the best thing you like about it, and we'll pass the mic.
I'm Preston Canute and I participated in Battery Buggy, Mystery Architecture, Circuit Lab, and, yeah. So I placed third place in three of them, which was Battery Buggy, Mystery Architecture, and, I'm blanking right now. Fossils, yes, sorry. And yeah, and I really liked it because we gotta build and study and I just like doing that.
Can we move all you guys down towards your teacher and then that way you can all be, and then come forward so folks can see you and hear you.
Hi, I'm Logan Canute. I'm in 8th grade and I did thermodynamics, which is where you have to build a box that can maintain a certain temperature, water at a certain temperature for a certain amount of time. And I competed in Game On, which they did better than me, but I, hey, I still competed, right? And we did pretty well on both of our events. And my favorite thing about the whole thing is that it has a really good teamwork, sense of teamwork and family ethnic, or like ethic, that's what, like, it kind of pushes you to work together in teams and become closer together as friends, so.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Alexa Hale. I participated in three events, just like everyone else. I did Battery Buggy also, I placed first place. Then me and my partner Carly here, we were in Meteorology, a test over weather. And we also did Write It, Do It. And that's where I wrote about the thing I saw, I gave her my paper and she made it. So, we placed first in Write It, Do It, second in Meteorology. And yeah, I'm really excited to go to New York.
With space and cars, she might be the next key line up.
Hi, I'm Tina Swanu and I'm in 8th grade and I did three events. I did solar systems, which you do basically about astronomy, and then you do disease detectives, where you try to, whatever. And then, I forgot the third one, meteorology, which is about meteorology. And the most thing I liked about our Science Olympiad team was how comfortable we were together and how we evolved into one big team.
Awesome. Good job.
Hi, my name's Carly Roberts, I'm an 8th grader and I did three events. I did Write It, Do It- I did Write It, Do It, Meteorology, and Experimental Design. Write It, Do It is where Alexa wrote it, and I had to do it. And we got first in that one. Then Meteorology, where we took the test on the weather, and we placed second in that one. And then Experimental Design, we were given a different, like, different things, like paperclips, pieces of paper, straws, and we had to make a glider, and then we had to make a science experiment out of that. And me and my team of two other girls got third place in that event. Probably my favorite thing about Science Olympiad is that we're all eighth graders, we're all, well, a lot of us are. We have like two seventh graders. But, so, a lot of us are leaving Northern Lights, and I myself have been there for nine years. So it's really cool to be able to go on kind of one last big thing together in New York, and be able to experience that together.
Hi, I'm Jace Westley, and I am in seventh grade, and I competed in the events Boomerang and Dynamic Planet. My favorite thing about this team is that I got to work with a lot of eighth graders, and I got to know them better on a more personal level, and that helps promote our friendship.
Hi, I'm Scott Griffith. I competed in thermodynamics in Game On with Logan, and I think my favorite part about Science Olympiad was ending ASD's title drought.
Hi, my name is Joshua Naverita, and I've, and I've, I participated in Elastic Launch Glider and Herpetology. My favorite thing overall about Science Olympiad is that, basically, getting to have the experience, just going to Conoco Phillips just to do those events, it was a great time.
Hi, I'm Asher Frost. I competed in the events Game On, in the winning team, and I also competed in the event Solar System, which is self-explanatory. I was also going into Water Purification, but that was canceled unfortunately. But I think my favorite part about Science Olympiad was probably the knowledge you get from it, and also the experience, but I've learned a lot over just participating in the activities that I don't think any other thing could really replicate.
Hey, my name is Aaron Rissard, and I'm in eighth grade. I participated in Game On, Disease Detectives, and Thermodynamics. They did better on that one. And, let's see, the favorite thing about this, I didn't have to work with anyone I didn't like.
So I'm the coach, I'm Carol McKee, and I'm just so proud of this group of students. This is, if I could handpick my students ahead of time, this is the dream team, and I'm so proud to be able to take them to New York City.
And the winning goes on in ASD. Now, please come forward from Romig Middle School Math Counts Team and Coaches. Please come forward! We have a lot to say about you! Nice to see you again! Alright, gentlemen. Come on over here. I was a former math teacher, and my favorite thing to tell students was math means money. Take a look at these gentlemen here, and they're gonna probably do quite well in life, beating the team and taking state. So on Saturday, ladies and gentlemen, March 23rd, the Romig Math Counts Team, led by Coach John Bruce, took first place overall in the state Math Counts Competition, including three of the four top individual spots. Who were those three? Nice, that's it, give 'em a hand! This is a three-peat. This is Romig Middle School's third state Math Counts title in a row, and they're sixth in the last ten years. Alex Loomis placed first overall, Camden Armstrong second overall, and EJ Bailey fourth overall. All eighth graders at Romig Middle School will head to Orlando, Florida, to compete in the National Math Counts, Math Counts Competition in May. Math certainly does count. Loomis and Armstrong initially tied for first, with Loomis winning a tiebreaker to take the first place trophy. Was that tough, gentlemen? Have you forgiven each other? Or no? Alright, Coach Bruce said these students really put in the extra time and earned this one. I am so impressed and proud of their accomplishments, not only as individual winners, but as a team. Congratulations on your state championship title, your third repeat, and good luck in the national competition in Orlando, Florida. You are who make ASD great. Give 'em a hand! And because I know math kids love to also talk, I am gonna, that's what I figured. You saw what happened, though? You get to say your name, maybe something about your favorite part of this, and then you can pass the mic as quick as you got it. How's that? Everybody wants to know your name. You gentlemen, we will see you over and over, I believe, in accomplishments through your education as you move to high school next year. Could you go first? Alright, here you go, and you gotta hold it about an inch away.
My name's Alex Loomis, and my favorite part of the competition was definitely the lunch.
My name's EJ Bailey, and I liked competing in the countdown round against other people.
My name's Spencer Parks, and I enjoyed solving math.
My name is Camden Armstrong, and I enjoyed the adrenaline rush that comes with like, just having the packet there, but you haven't opened it yet, and then when you open it, you see the problems, and more adrenaline. It's crazy, trust me.
My name is Zach Schaefer, and I really like just learning everything in preparation for the competition.
My name's Andrew Billings, and I liked competing with my friends.
Hey, my name's John Bruce, and, you know, I tell you what, I'm very fortunate to have such a powerful group of students. And these guys, you know, I did say they worked hard. Yes, they did. They put in countless hours, and they deserved it. They really did. They worked, you know, in the classroom, but it's not just stuff that you learn in the classroom, but this is stuff that's outside the box that they have worked on. And I have to say that this is one of the teams that actually worked together the best. They would find a problem, they'd work together, and then, and solve it. But also, we, we hooked a couple of high school students. Vladimir Kuhn here, he comes over from West, and helps, helps the kid who was out. And Tyler Graber, he's over at Diamond, you know, but he's a hockey player, you know, so, you know, he took a few hits to the head, but he also did math counts. And I tell you what, very lucky to have 'em. And, you know, for, for the alumni to come back and work with the kids has been a blessing because, boy, oftentimes you just say wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, but then they got, they have kid talk down, which is a nice to see and, and hear. So, great job. I can hardly wait to go all expenses paid to Orlando First Class on the Engineers Society, so that's gonna be great.
Alright, seeing I'm forced to say something. Math Counts really is a great program. I was in it for three years, had a great time, met a lot of really important people that have offered me internships, so, who knows?
I'm Tyler Graber, and the coolest thing about this team was how well they worked together, and how committed they were, and the time outside of school that they put into this, after school, on the weekends, on spring break, and stuff like that. It's cool, cool to see their persistence.
Gentlemen, thank you for making ASD great. We wish you luck, and break a pencil or something when you're down there in Florida. We know you're gonna do well for yourselves, for your families, for ASD, and you really represent your state well. So thank you and congratulations. We're gonna take a quick pic, and then we have two more individual awards that will, right after this picture, we'll take 'em. So gentlemen, let's go take a picture. And we had to have Camden stay around, because Camden Armstrong, he doesn't need to come forward, he's already here. He not only kicked math in Math Counts, he also kicks words in spelling. So he is our State of Alaska State Spelling Bee winner! So, Camden Armstrong, an eighth grader from Romig, is the Alaska State Spelling Bee Champion. The State Spelling Bee took place at the Alaska Center for the Performing Arts Discovery Theater in downtown Anchorage on March 19th, only a few days before his math competition. With more schools this year than any other year, over 180 students from all over our state competed at this year's Bee. Mind you, those 180 students were already the top winners in those 180 different schools. So there's thousands of students that participate to compete every year in Alaska. Spelling Bee champions from schools all over came together to vie for the State Spelling Bee Championship Title. Camden's language arts teacher, Lena Palmer, said, "I could not be more proud. Camden is a ferocious reader and a wonderful writer as well." She didn't mention anything about math, but we already know that fact. "He is a joy to work with, and I look forward to all of the wonderful things he will continue to accomplish in the future." And for those of you who have never seen a National Spelling Bee, it is on ESPN. So just so you know, you're gonna be on ESPN. It is a sport, it is a major competition, and I look forward to the intensity that Cameron will bring to the stage. Congratulations to the Alaska's 2019 champion, Camden Armstrong. He will be headed to the 2000 Scripps National Spelling Bee in Harbor, Maryland, in May. Congratulations! Two East Coast trips for this gentleman. And what would you like to say? We're gonna give you the mic.
Firstly, I have no idea the spelling bee was a sport, so I guess, I guess I'm athletic now.
Your brain can do backflips, man.
Yeah, but also, I'd like to really quickly recognize everyone who's gotten me here. Firstly, my parents, my dad and also my mom, who I don't think is here right now, but that, please, please tell her I said this. And, as well as everyone, as well as everyone else who helped me, and believe me, there's a lot of people who did. Oh yeah, and my favorite part about the spelling bee, I would say, I would say Maryland slash DCS slash wherever in that general area it is, but it's hot down there, and I don't happen to like hot. So my favorite part is probably that end rush, where you're just, where there's just two people, and you're trying to get like the words right, because it's just you and the other person. Eucasia.
I'm Lena Palmer, I'm Camden's language arts teacher. I'd just like to congratulate you again, Camden. I really think that your, at least part of your spelling prowess comes from your love of reading. Cameron always has a book in his hand, and any practice that he did outside of, for the spelling bee, was outside of class. So it's all his own time, his own motivation, and I'm very excited for you to go to Nationals, and congrats again.
Let's take a picture right here. Ladies and gentlemen, Camden, make ASD great! And now, for the last awardee of this evening, the National GOB winner, Elena Bell-Torado? Did I say that? Is it Bella? Alana Bell. Alana Bell has already come forward. Alana, I saw a little bit of your competition the other day. Yes, yeah. Alana Bell has won the Alaska State National Geographic Bee. Her winning question was, what strait separates the Australian states of Victrova? Victoria? Oh, that's misspelled on my thing. And Tasmania. So what strait separates Victoria and Tasmania?
The Bass Strait.
The Bass Strait. Were you the only one who got that right?
Yeah, we had to do a sudden death round.
Oh, excellent. And I've seen this competition where they have to write it on boards, and then they flip it around at the last minute, so that's pretty technical. So Alana Bell is an eighth grader at Romig, who's been up here several times, who has a passion and talent for social studies. She's made it to the State Geography Bee every year since she was in elementary school, and where did you go to elementary school?
Rogers Park.
Rogers Park Elementary School. Alright, let's go Rogers Park. This year, because of her hard work and dedication, she achieves her goal as a state champion. With this one, Alana Bell will receive one, this is the first year I heard that, and the student last year who won was pretty upset. This is the first year National Geographic is offering $1,000. So Alana won $1,000! Yes! As well as an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC for the National GOB. Congratulations on your state win, and good luck at the national competition. You make ASD great, and your teacher's here with you. So we'd love for you to share a few words about this competition and your geographic prowess.
Oh, yeah, kinda like what Camden said, the best part was definitely a sudden death round, because, you know, one slip up can kinda all end it. And, yeah, it was really great to win, especially since my last year of eligibility, you know, afterward, is high school, and then they don't have a geography in those years. And, yeah, I'm really glad I could end it on a great note as a state champion.
For both of our students to say that they liked the most intense part, they are true competitors. You guys are like competitors to the end. Here you go.
Yeah, hi, my name's Mr. Johnson, I teach eighth grade at Romig. And, yeah, Alana Bell is an excellent student. Not only did she win the GOB, she got first place in the documentary for individual for National History Day. So, excellent writer. When we had the class competition, like, nobody wanted to show up, because everyone was just like, well, Alana Bell's gonna win, because she's just so good at geography. Not only, she's the first girl, I believe in 10 years, to win the GOB, and I believe 20% of the people that participated were girls, so kudos to that, and I'm just super excited that you get to go to the state competition, the national competitions. Good job.
Are you traveling with her? No. Alright, who's gonna travel to DC with you? Oh, let's do that.
Yeah, I'd like to thank my mom back there.
Mom, come on up for a picture too! Come on! Alright, ladies and gentlemen, Al-